Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll open this up for the initial public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. Anyone wishing to speak during the initial public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the initial public comment. The agenda for possible action, approval of the minutes. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I know this is a little out of order, but could we take item number four before item number two? I know that Grant has an appointment to get to.
Absolutely. You've still gotta do a motion on this. I've got a motion to adjust the agenda. Moving item number four. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're gonna jump to item number four, please, for possible action. V-19-645, Grant Turner, 704 Nevada Way. Susan, please.
Can you excuse me? Holly? Oh. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 704 Nevada Way, this is a proposal for a second advertising structure on a property within the C2 zone. The property is occupied by a hotel, currently Best Western, that has a restaurant bar on site, the tap which is operated by the applicant. There's already the one large freestanding sign on the property which primarily advertises the hotel, but a portion of the sign also advertises the tap. There's also signs for the tap painted on the front portion of the building, although those signs are somewhat recessed from the front patio and upper levels. The applicant recently constructed a separate monument sign for the tap and the variance is needed for this second sign which is temporarily in place. One item of note regarding the property is that although it has frontage on Nevada Way, it's a very deep property and another part of the property technically has frontage on Date Street. Per the code, that would entitle it to a separate freestanding sign there. The applicant is instead requesting a second sign along Nevada Way which would, in actuality, is much smaller than the allowed sign on Date Street would be. However, we have not been able to contact the owner to find out if, you know, he had ever any plans to put a sign on Date Street, but that's probably not likely. Regarding setbacks, the code requires a minimum front setback of three feet from the back of sidewalk or public right-of-way which if ever is greater. The property line is seven feet behind the sidewalk. Right now, the holes are pre-drilled for the sign and the applicant's been advised that it can't be located within the right-of-way without an encroachment license from the Public Works Department, but that's an action entirely separate from the variance, so the planning commission doesn't need to consider that here tonight. The staff report goes over the five criteria necessary for the planning commission in order to approve a variance and concludes with alternate findings that the commission can use to either approve or deny the request. If approved, the one standard condition is proposed is that the variance approval is based on the plans and information submitted and reviewed by the planning commission tonight.
Okay, thank you. Before we get to you, Grant, we're gonna circle around up here. Are there any questions of staff before we address the applicant?
I have a question.
Absolutely, Koki, please.
Susan, out in front of my office, I have a piece of artwork which is some rusted metal and it sits on a slab of stone.
I'm sorry, you have what on a?
Out in front of my office, I have a rusted piece of metal, sits on stone, it's called artwork.
Okay.
Some think it is, some think it's not. But what if Grant put this on a piece of stone, would that then be considered artwork?
No, it's...
Why would it not be considered artwork?
Well, every business owner in town could claim that the advertising sign that lists the name of their business or anything else is art, and I don't know as that would hold up in court.
Because I would think if it was art that we wouldn't have to say anything about it, but, and I also want to see, every business in town has at least two signs and possibly many more signs. In fact, Albertson's tonight, I was there, I noticed they have two monument signs right as you drive in, one was for pharmacy and one a monument sign. Did we give them a variance for that?
That's in the report. They did get multiple approvals from the planning commission many years ago.
Okay. That was my question of how, what's the difference between art and, like mine's on a piece of stone and it's called art? Okay, you're gonna answer that question. Thank you.
Yeah, as has been interpreted previously, art, it's not advertising the business. If it's a mural, then that is considered art, but if there is references to the business, the name, or something along those lines, then it's considered a sign. So that's how the distinction is made.
Can I ask one more question?
So, I know we've been wanting to work on signs for at least eight years that I know of, because it's a mess. Almost every business, I was gonna drive up and down the street and find out which properties had too much, and I would be spending a whole day just documenting all of the properties. Almost every business up and down the boulevard and the highway corridor have at least two signs, three signs, some have sandwich boards up, some have flags up, and I thought, I don't wanna be the rat ratting any one person out, but we do nothing about some of these other things that are up, and that's quite concerning to me that why are we picking on one person?
Hopefully, no one feels like they're being picked on, and you're right, there is a lot of temporary signage that's out there. So that's the first distinction between permanent signage and temporary signage. And our economic development coordinator has reached out to the business community in the chamber and also is interested in hearing from other businesses about proposed changes to the sign code. Particularly along Boulder City Parkway, right now with the construction that's occurring, there has been additional signage. The code actually allows for certain additional temporary signage when construction's occurring. So it's certainly the city's intent and it's currently something the economic development coordinator is working on to, after engagement with the business community, come forward with proposed changes to the sign code.
Is he going to get every business and are we all gonna have an opportunity to, all the businesses going to have an opportunity, or is, how is he going to do that?
Well, we've already had one outreach effort. Unfortunately, only two businesses showed up to that.
Well, I'll tell you why.
Yeah, so we're gonna certainly try again to get community engagement.
I didn't go to the meeting because you've done a bunch of outreaches, including this, and nothing ever gets done, so it was kind of like, do I wanna go spend an hour for nothing to be done? If I knew something was, they were actually going to address it, I would really attend a meeting and be part of that, but not if just to go sit and spend my evening talking with, and nothing ever gets done. And that's what's happened in the last eight years. So if I had some assurance, and maybe some of the other businesses had that assurance that we were really going to look at it, because I'm probably the only business owner along there, well, you are too, that the signs really, it affects us, our signage, so I would just really, if he's gonna reach out, if he could reach out to all of us and say, we're finally gonna sit down and really do it this time, so that you're spending your time and energy not to just have it wasted. So that's just, I'm just sharing it, and I'm off topic.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
My question slash comment is about the actual signage in the right-of-way. We've got a motel directly across the street, their signage is obviously in the right-of-way, restaurants across the street, we've got that big flashing sign in the right-of-way as well. It, I don't see how a sign in the right-of-way is a reasonable argument against, or for denial of this. Can we get some clarification on that?
Yes, actually, the right-of-way aspect is not to be, it's not before the planning commission at all, so it's not used as a reason for or against the proposal.
I guess there's a whole, half a page of this talking about this sign is in the right-of-way, in the packet.
It's mentioning it, but also to let you know that the, you know, the applicant will apply to Public Works. There certainly are some other signs in the historic district, you know, grandfathered in from long ago mostly, you know, regarding signs in the right-of-way, but it's, we're just letting you know it's not a concern for you to deal with. That will be entirely up to Public Works.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan. Just to kind of wrap a bow around that understanding, because I too was a little confused about whether or not the right-of-way issue was something we needed to worry about. So my understanding then is simply that our, our work here tonight is simply regarding whether or not a second sign should be allowed.
That's correct. The only reason I had to bring up the right-of-way issue is because the code now also has a setback requirement, and it didn't for most of the history. You could put a sign right up to the front property line. Now the code states that the sign is supposed to be at least three feet back from a property line or right-of-way, and we didn't know at the time, we had to advertise this request, where the sign was gonna wind up in the end, whether or not Public Works would approve an encroachment license, or if not, how far back the sign would be from the property line. So I advertised zero foot to be safe, because you have, you know, presumably, I mean, if Public Works doesn't approve the encroachment license, presumably the applicant's gonna want it right at the front property line at a zero-foot setback, so that will require approval of the planning commission. Otherwise, if you deny that aspect, he'd have to put a three feet back from the property line per the code requirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Nope. Okay. Grant, I'm gonna have to ask you to state your name and then if you've got anything to present for us for the sign.
Grant Turner, Boulder City resident. Thank you guys for being so accommodating, and I'd like to add as well, coming, coming fresh off of historic preservation and city council meetings, it is refreshing to see, first of all, the, the business community represented by the, by the planning committee. I appreciate Koki's sentiments, and the design itself, the sign itself is consistent with the architecture. I love it, it's kind of modern industrial, it's what we do. It's relatively small. I'm the, my unique situation is that we are attached to the Best Western and people have a hard time finding us because our only sign, our only monument sign is, is past our property and there's really no distinction between us and the hotel. This was my, this was my best effort to distinguish us from the hotel. I just think it's so appropriate, where it's situated, any further back and it's kind of behind the patio, any further forward and I think it's kind of a little bit too close for pedestrians. It's simple, it's effective, it's clean, and I appreciate your consideration. I'm open to questions.
Go ahead and open up questions for the applicant.
None.
Well, then I'll ask a question, so at least you get grilled a little bit.
I'll take it.
Does it light up? I saw, you know, as you guys were putting it in, is it gonna be backlit? Is there anything with that, or as is, as we see it in both the photographs and during the day?
Yes, sir, it will be backlit by solar LEDs.
Beautiful. And there's nothing that's gonna come for us for that, for any lighting, technical stuff? Beautiful. Okay, well, I've got no, no further questions. We've got no other questions for you, so we'll bring it around here, open it up for discussion or entertain a motion.
Public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, and Grant, you can have a seat.
Oh, thank you, guys.
This is a public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing portion to this. Anyone wishing to speak or be heard on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll bring it around to the dais for discussion or entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve V-19-645.
I will second that motion.
Per findings and condition?
Subject to staff's findings and conditions.
Beautiful. I've got a motion, and who would like a second?
I'll second the motion.
We've got a second there. I would like to make one comment on there, and it addresses what Koki had talked about, and we have been for six years, but I've been here, every time we discuss a sign, we say we're gonna address the sign code. With that same spirit, I think that it's important for our committee and our commission to, as we hear the talking points, that we wanna be business-friendly and we wanna do things to stimulate economic development and vitality in this city. If we're not gonna do it by cleaning up the regulations, which we understand takes manpower hours and a whole lot going back to it, our next bet is us up here effectively passing things like this that in my mind is an absolute no-brainer. So I've got a motion and a second. I had to just say that if we're gonna be business-friendly, it's on us and it'll start with us. So I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Absolutely. Item number three for possible action, V-19-634, John Sterling, 555 Avenue G.
I'm sorry, yeah, this is, yeah, agenda item two. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me get to my notes. The applicant has owned this property since 1978 and is now in the process of selling. The property is Zoned R3, multiple-family residential, but like most of the town site lots in this area, it's a small property. It's not, you know, an acreage site, you know, for a large apartment building. The staff report notes the history of the three dwellings that are sight, and it's the third dwelling that's the topic of this variance request, because when a buyer inquired as to the legality of the third unit, and I went digging through the files, we realized that although a permit was obtained in 1988 which resulted in the third unit, it technically wasn't approved properly, so therefore that third unit isn't legally grandfathered in. Technically, the site is just shy of the 7,500 square feet it would need to be to have three units legally on-site, and part of the problem stemmed from the fact that the permit drawings from back in that time were mistakenly showing the property larger than it actually is, because the applicant had received an easement from the city to utilize the alley or walkway to the east of his property. It was only, the easement was only granted for basically parking and access in walls, but whether the applicant or his contractors that he hired misunderstood that, they were kind of showing that as part of his property, so permits got approved on that basis, but it's not entirely the applicant or his contractor's fault. I mean, an argument can be made that back, even back in the 80s, the staff at the time, you know, should be verifying the information before permits get issued. But also, to be fair, as noted in the staff report, there was a whole lot less, it was a lot more difficult to get that information back in the 80s than it is now, when it's pretty easy to look up your property online and see the property dimensions, because the county has their database online and they overlay it with aerial photos. It's a lot easier today than it was decades ago where you had to go digging through files and especially back then, owners may not have necessarily realized how large their property was or wasn't. Regarding the second aspect of the variance, which is for a setback for the staircase, presumably the staircase might have been on the plans for the second unit when that was approved, but those plans no longer exist for the city. So applying the code requirement, it would need a two-foot side setback. The applicant has recently removed the encroachments that were over the city right-of-way that didn't have permits to begin with, but that's all taken care of right now. And actually, the staff report noted that at the time, the information we had is that the remaining staircase and landing would be six to nine inches off the property line. I advertised zero feet to be safe, which was a good thing, because the applicant's done more recent measurements after having removed the encroachments, and apparently at the closest point, the landing's more like an inch or two off the property line, so the zero-foot setback advertised, you know, will, if approved, will take care of that measure. The staff report also notes that although this site would allow 2.9 dwelling units on it, that's based on the current code. Historically, the density was allowed to be higher in the multifamily residential zone, so there certainly are examples elsewhere in town where there is a slightly higher density or more on lots that are also Zoned R3. The staff report analyzes the property and the circumstances, analyzes the five criteria that the planning commission need to find in favor of, and concludes again with possible conditions to use for either approval or denial of the request, and the one recommended condition is the standard one, that it's based on these plan and information as submitted, and as I noted, we advertised a zero-foot side setback for the staircase, and what we know now is that the staircase will be an inch or two within that, so that is accurate.
Okay, thank you, Susan. I'll kick us off with questions for staff before we get to the applicant. I kind of got a pointed clarification in that, in our report here, it says that it was, wasn't permitted legally in 1988 for our third dwelling, yet in the description, issuing a permit, how can the city issue a permit illegally? I know it was through an administrative error, but when it comes down to it and we stand before a judge, can we issue a permit illegally, or once it's issued, if it's by at fault, it then exo facto becomes the legal permit?
The permit was issued by staff, so in that regard, it's legal, it's just perhaps another way to phrase it, and it was perhaps improperly approved, because staff should have checked and verified that and noticed that the information submitted wasn't accurate, that the applicant showed the property, or the applicant being, it might have been his contractor, showed the property larger than it legally was. So the plan submitted, if that, you know, they showed the property being large enough...
No, I absolutely understand where the administrative error occurs, but Michael, do we not have a mechanism in place that the city staff has the ability, given an administrative error almost 30 years ago can't be cleaned up, and we've gotta come before the planning commission for this? I mean, even if it was done erroneously, it was done, it was issued, that should be of no fault to the applicant whatsoever. Staircase, we'll address in a second, but a third dwelling should have been caught, and I understand the backstory of everything, but we don't have a mechanism that you and your staff could have just rubber-stamped this and pushed this through?
No. And we've talked to city attorney, and this was the path to address this issue.
Is there something, a mechanism in place that you guys can put in place for the future, so that unfortunately, we have to be here this evening for this, but future applicants that may come across this don't have to go through the same procedures? If we can identify, based on fact, that it was issued, and issued is issued?
Yeah, and again, it was issued under a certain representation, which wasn't the case, and so we'd have to evaluate what possible legal mechanisms could be put in place to be able to allow that kind of process.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind just have that conversation with Al and Steve and just see if that's there. I've got no further questions for staff.
It's still on the applicant's, it's a responsibility to show where their bloodlines are through survey, so whatever information that they turn in, it's their responsibility to make sure that information's correct as far as the plot plan goes, correct?
Correct.
So if they were two feet over on someone else's property line and they drew it in, and it showed it that way and the city approved it, it's still the applicant's responsibility to know that they're in their neighbor's property?
Correct.
So, Mr. Chairman, so we have, the applicant has an easement in place that was granted to him. Where's the year?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six? No.
August eighty-seven.
August eighty-seven, thank you. So, and that easement is still in effect today, correct?
Yes.
I guess my point to Steve, and maybe this will be later for discussion, so I'll hold that for discussion later. I just wanted to verify that they still had that easement and wasn't gonna be revoked or anything like that.
But my question kind of goes...
Hold, go ahead.
My question kind of goes along with that. So if they had the easement, they would assume that was their property?
No, the easement was a legal document. It was written specifically to grant ingress and egress and to allow for a wall. So it was specific to those items.
Right.
Susan, could it be argued that ingress and egress includes a staircase to the upper level?
Right, but the staircase actually isn't on, the staircase itself is on his property. The issue was later that a carport and the landing at the top of the stairway, both of those actually were, we don't know why the landing was made wider. The applicant says it was done at the same time, so I don't know why staff might not have caught that at the time, but again, we don't have those plans on file anymore when that building was built. But the carport, the encroachments were never approved over the city right-of-way, because that never had a permit, but that has been resolved. The applicant has removed them.
I have another question.
The block wall, that is on the easement, correct?
It's within the easement, right on the property line.
Oh, it's right on the property line?
Well, yeah, I mean, on the other side of the wall is the parking lot that the city now owns that was built for the new life building.
Okay.
So the wall is within the easement.
Okay, it's in that easement there, and they're using part of that easement? So, do you understand what I'm saying?
He's parking cars in the easement, which he's allowed to do.
But the block wall is not in the easement at all?
No, the block wall is in the easement. The outer, that block wall you see right there is entirely within the city easement. The applicant's staircase is right at the edge of his property line, so all that paved area between the applicant's staircase and the wall is that 12-foot wide city walkway.
Okay, and that block wall, who put that in?
The applicant put that in once the easement was granted.
And it was granted, they were granted permission to put that in there? So the city realized they were gonna be driving back and forth in there to park?
Right, the easement specifically allowed for the walls and for ingress and egress, which would include his parking.
Includes parking, okay.
Thank you. Susan, one question. You'd mentioned earlier that the density had been changed from what was a higher density allocation, I guess, to what the current density is, requiring 7,500 square feet for three units?
Yes, but the current density was in place when the applicant built his third unit. I was just pointing out in terms of, one of the standards for a variance is, are there any other properties in the same zone that enjoy that same privilege? So I pointed out that yes, there are older properties that would have a higher density based on the older code.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Has the two-story unit, has that always been two separate units? Was it ever one unit with an internal staircase?
No.
Before we address the applicant, hold on one second. Do we have any other questions for staff? No. We'll ask the applicant to present anything that they got for this, and then we'll address questions.
Yeah, John Sterling, Boulder City resident for 42 years. I had a business in Boulder City for 26 years. At that time, when I found out this was R3, I didn't, I had Lorne Frogi, now that's probably a contractor before your time. Lorne come out, drew my plans, measured my lot, I had to sign it, because I, at that time, you could be an owner-builder, which now you can't. At that time, I had Bud plumbing license, Porter Electric license, Dan Cruz was the building director at that time, David Barbo... David Barbou was the inspector. He inspected everything for plumbing and electric and okayed everything, and that was in 1987. Now, not knowing as much as I should have known for building, when Lorne drew the plans and took them to the city and he had the measurements, like I said, I was owner builder, so I signed by John Sterling. So if I'm at fault, I'm at fault. But, you know, that's 38 years ago or whatever, a long time ago.
My name, Susan, my name is Roger Harris. I'm an attorney in town for 25 years or so. There's a history with this property that goes back to 1978, but the more recent history is what's interesting, I think. We, Mr. Sterling attempted to buy the alley from the city. This is a mini alley off Wyoming that runs between Wyoming and Arizona. It's 12 feet wide and it's 70 feet long. He was given an easement by city manager George Forbes. Also, the lady who lives behind him was given the same easement. So he took over, the easement was in 1987, right after he built this addition. And at that time, he did, as he says, he got licensed tradesmen to come in and make the improvements and build it. And everything was permitted at that time, including the block wall. But the block wall is not part of this discussion. That was permitted and that's all proper. We went to the city historical preservation committee about three months ago, two or three months ago, because Mr. Sterling wanted to buy that 12 by 70-foot strip of alley. All right? The historical preservation committee found no problem with it. They didn't have found no interference with the historical program of the city. They gave us their unanimous support. So we took that to the city council. And we proposed to the city council, we had two appraisals done because the previous city council had voted three to one, the mayor voted against, the current mayor voted against it, for Mr. Sterling to get two appraisals on the property in order to sell it. But the, like I said, the prior city council gave him the authorization to do that. So we got the two appraisals done. We had the support of the historical preservation committee. The city council, for reasons I'm unclear about, denied our purchase offer and at that point, put us in a tough position because now we had to come here, okay, in front of the planning committee and say, okay, we have this property about, and it was built in 1987 or 86, and we built on 7,350 square feet, a lot, when we should have built on 7,500 square feet. So it was 150-foot error. I can't say at that time, it was Mr. Frogi's error or Mr. Sterling's error, but it was 150 square feet. All right? So Susan told John to go out and do certain things. He had a carport which encroached on the city's alley on the property. He took the carport out, the porch, yeah, we don't have to picture up anymore. The porch, which is on the east side, which is the far left side of the building, he had to cut that one back.
Two and a half foot.
Two and a half feet in order to comply with the city requirement. But it's a three, it's three units and that's a small duplex building. Each unit's about 630, 660 square feet, I believe. Okay? And today, we're seeking an administrative variance to allow him to have the building and move forward on that with his sale of the property, simply. As to the stairway, I'm not even real sure about that, but apparently there was supposed to be a couple-foot setback and the paper I saw said eight inches setback. So we need a variance on that also for, because we're off a foot on, on the stairway. I think that's what Susan's referring to, if I'm not mistaken. Am I?
Yeah, the code requires a two-foot setback and at the closest point, it's just an inch or two off the property line.
But we have done everything to comply. We took down the carport. We, we cut the porch back. We've always permitted everything.
Tough shed.
Tough shed in the back. We had to move that about a foot over because of the city, that was on the city's alley. So we still have the easement, but like I say, the easement, the alley actually starts at the east side of the wall, if I'm correct.
Right.
Okay? And extends 12 feet over. So it comes almost to where the staircase, you can follow that line, just move in a westerly direction. It comes almost to the end of the staircase. Yeah, all right. Almost to the western side of the staircase.
It's nine inches off of the property line.
Nine inches?
Yeah.
Yeah. So essentially, we've done everything we can and now we need this administrative variance. But if there's any questions or anything you want to add, John?
No, I think we covered about everything.
Okay, we'll have questions for the applicant. We'll start on the end.
Because of the lack of the square footage, you don't meet the criteria. Is there any way, or was that ever, the duplex, was it ever a single dwelling, the two-story?
No, no.
Was it, was it built for just revenue?
That was a garage. And I tore the garage out of there, tore it down and had, Vennos Construction is the one that built that. He was a licensed contractor in Boulder City for years.
Okay. And when you, was it strictly for single-family, I mean, not single-family rental, was it just for rental purposes?
Yeah, just for rental purposes.
Okay.
And if I could just add something, John lived in the house?
Next door.
Right next door.
Raised my family there.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you guys so much. I'm gonna, before I open it up for public hearing, just one point of clarification. Had the city agreed to sell them that area where the easement was, the square footage of the land would have grown large enough to where we would not be needing to be talking about either the dwelling or the stairway setback. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add, we've had that easement since 1987, I believe.
Eighty-seven is says in our packet in there, absolutely. Thank you guys both. We're going to conduct the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to be heard or speak on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll bring it around the dais for conversation or entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Do we have any discussion?
I was just going to say, it, it seems to me, and I know the attorney there said that the fence didn't mean anything, but why the city let them put up a fence alongside of an easement and then it was like they were granting them that property to use and allowed them to put a fence up? And now they want to take it back away from them? So for me, excuse me, I guess I'd like to make a motion then. How's that?
Well, and before we do that.
Oh, you do want to say something?
And we've got to address, the city's not taking away the easement. They're not taking away that alleyway. It's not affecting the wall. It's not affecting anything but where that property line is.
I understand that they're not doing, but I mean, when they didn't sell it to them. Because if you go look at it, it's a dead end right there. I don't, I don't know, the property actually looks like it belongs to that piece of land there. If you drive by and actually look at it.
Couldn't agree more.
I didn't know there was a walkway there even. I always thought that was the, you know, that it belonged to that property there. So I was just, I.
And it's the unfortunate event of a prior council gave them the blessing to run with it and a current council has a whole different view on it.
And I think now that what we're doing, like down in McKeeverville, where we're having them do the, the surveys so that we know everybody's getting on the right lots and everything, I think back in the day, things were a little bit looser then. And I think today, we're getting a little bit wiser about lot lines and stuff like that. And we have the internet that can help us too. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve V-1964.
Can I say something just for a minute?
Hold on, sir, this isn't appropriate at this time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And staff findings and condition.
And now is this, just to clarify, this is for A and B. We're talking third dwelling and the stairway.
And the stairway.
Perfect. I've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second that motion.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number three for possible action, V-19644, 1305 Alpine Drive. Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant hired a licensed contractor to build a new attached carport, which they use as a boat cover on the front of the home. Unfortunately, the contractor did not apply for a building permit before starting construction, which was nearly complete when staff discovered the work in progress. When the contractors subsequently submitted the permit request, we realized that their plot plan did not correctly show the front property line. And especially as this part of Alpine Drive is not a standard street within the city, it's definitely narrower than other streets, but within a standard right of way and there is no sidewalk. The result being that, especially in this area, people and contractors do not know where property lines are. So we had to require the owners to get a survey so that we would know exactly how close the carport was to the front property line so that we could advertise the variance request. And so as you see there, it turns out that the closest part of the carport is just under five feet from the front property line, which is approximately 14 feet or so back of the curb. As noted, this part of Alpine Drive, or rather, all of Alpine Drive is a bit unusual because it's in a hilly part of town. So all of the lots on one side of the street are below street level. This is on the side of the street where the lots are above street level. So you've got other photos in the packet which show that most of the front of the lot actually is a slope up to where the house is. So even though there's a second driveway, the applicant states that they couldn't have a boat cover over on the other side of the home where it would be allowed and not violate setbacks because of the steepness of the driveway. And when you look at the photos in the packet, pretty much this flat part of the lot is the only logical place to put a deep structure if, you know, that is required. That being said, the code obviously doesn't normally allow for structures that encroach into a front property line. You can have your carports and boat covers on the side or rear of the home. The applicant's arguing that they don't have an alternative in this case. And the staff report also notes the other history of other properties on Alpine Drive, which have also been granted variances. And from past historical research, apparently, staff also allowed some things closer without making the owners get variances. So there just is sort of an unusual history for that street. Again, the staff report analyzes the property and the variance findings, concluding with the same options to either approve or deny, with the same recommended condition if approved, that everything is based on the information you've got before you or as may be discussed tonight.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes, I have a quick question. And this doesn't have anything to do with what, whether or not we're going to grant this or not. It seems like we have a lot of structures, buildings, things that go in and that people ask for forgiveness instead of permission. Are we assessing fines even though they do get involved or they do get approved because of all the extra work that we have to go through?
In this case, when work is done without a permit, the contractor will be required to pay double fees for that permit. And hopefully, in this case, you know, the applicants are claiming that they thought that they were hiring good contractors. Hopefully, the contractor won't be passing that cost on to the owners.
Well, they could probably go to the contractor's board if they do.
That's their option.
Susan, I just really wanted to reiterate Steve's point. I'd written down the very same three questions, so here we.
I didn't read it either.
So here we have a licensed contractor who did not apply for a permit. It seems to me that any structure that is anywhere near the front of a house, all contractors know there's a right of way. They know that Boulder City has pretty significant right of ways or setback requirements. I'm flabbergasted that we're continuously bombarded with these situations where people build. And so if we don't have a fining process in place, it seems to me that double the permit cost is, is a minor inconvenience. I think there should be a significant fine. I'm just really, I'm just flabbergasted that we see this time and again. And I just really wanted to go on record to say that. So that's my piece.
We've got questions for staff?
Yes. It seems to me that there's a lot of carports that we have come in here that need this variance. Is there a reason that we would, that contractors would think they don't need to have a variance? Do you, I mean, a permit, do you have to have a permit for any type of carport that you build or like a gazebo, like one of those flat gazebos? Even a flat gazebo, you have to? Now, see, I didn't know that. I wonder if maybe we could put something in the newspaper or something like that, a little article, letting everybody know? Because I, I was thinking about doing a gazebo and I didn't know if I've got to have a permit for a gazebo. It was a question I was going to ask, but I didn't think I would have to. So that might be something to think about doing to help everybody.
In response to a concern raised by the city council earlier this year, in your utility mailer last month, you saw a flyer that our department put together. That flyer outlines the types of improvements that require permits and the types of improvements that don't require permits. And in fact, it had CR code linkage to the website to provide more information on that and certainly our contact information. So hopefully, that which went to all residences in the community and which we're also promoting in other ways to the business community will help to address that.
It would be nice, maybe if you could get it in something else, because I bring this up too. As a business person, that just gets, somebody else pays your bills for you or it's on auto pay? It just goes in the file? So, huh?
Circular.
So maybe like in the Boulder City Magazine or the newspaper, something like that might help too. So I'm sorry, I didn't see it, but I'll go try to dig it out. Is it online?
We have all that information online. In fact, the paper flyer links to the website, which highlights those improvements that require permits and those improvements that don't.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ernie.
Question for staff. On the, because the street is narrow in that area, how wide is the actual street? Do we, is it?
I'm sorry, if I didn't write it in the report, I'd have to go research that. My vague recollection is it might be 10 feet narrower than standard streets, but.
Well, let me ask a different question related though to it. Is there street parking allowed on either side?
I'd have to research that as well. If it's narrower, there may be, I don't know, if it's not red curbed. In theory, the fire department would prohibit parking on narrower streets, but if it's not red curbed. I'm sorry, these are the types of questions that is good to ask staff in advance of the meeting so that we can get answers for you.
I thought that's what we're here for, if we need to ask questions. But okay, I'll try to remember for the future.
Well, no, that's just the right of.
To help answer Ernie's question, I did an aerial measurement and found it from the back of the curb, because there's no sidewalk there. So from back of curb to back of curb, it's 29 feet from what I, if this aerial measurement's accurate. The, Susan, do you know when our standard right of way went from 60 feet to 51 feet?
I believe sometime in the late 80s, early 90s, but I'd have to check with Public Works.
So this house was built in 81 and I can, I saw the applicant's house prior to them purchasing it. And I can verify that that driveway, if you're facing the house, well, I guess to the east of them, that driveway is very steep. I couldn't imagine being able to park anything on there for a long term without it sliding down. So if they were to park a boat, I really think this driveway in the front is probably their best option unless they remove the pool out of the backyard. I just can't imagine doing that either. No, I'm, I think I'm good.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Hearing and seeing none, okay. Applicant, please state your names and then provide us any sort of back, anything that we need to know.
Okay. My name is Tamara Stafford. This is my husband Eric. We moved to Boulder City at the end of March of this year. And before we bought the house on Alpine, we were up there maybe three or four times, like meeting with the owners. We knew immediately that boat parking. We knew immediately that boat parking and RV parking were going to be an issue because we came, we sold our house in Henderson that was on an acre. So, obviously, parking was not a problem for us, so that was a big concern. But, we loved the house, so he brought, he asked the owner, "Kuma, can I bring up my boat and try to get it up that back driveway?" So, we actually brought the boat out to Boulder City and tried to back it into the driveway and it, he can attest to that, it just didn't happen. We actually tried the same thing with our RV. We ended up selling our RV because there was no, it was like the boat or the RV, that's all. We didn't want to pay $200 a month plus to store the boat. And so, we hired a licensed contractor. And as Susan will attest, because she and I have talked about this, if you look the contractor up online, I mean, I checked him on the contractors' board, I checked his website, I checked Yelp. I did my homework on him and he is totally legit. How he came up here and decided that he didn't need a permit, I don't know. I would like to echo your frustration because we were very upset too when somebody showed up from the city and asking if we had a permit. We're like, oh. And then, anyway, so here we are. And so, we didn't mean to ask for forgiveness and we certainly would have asked for permission first. If we had known, I mean, if we had hired a good enough contractor that understood that we should have had a permit, we wouldn't be here. And I apologize that it didn't happen that way. But, I mean, you guys have seen the photos and, I mean, yes, it's in the setback, but it's not encroaching on the street at all and it still provides for a full driveway. And you have anything you want to add?
It was weird for me and I apologize too because we-
Talking nicely?
I apologize too because we, we vetted out some contractors and he came recommended and said all the right things, so we hired him to do it. And as far as the setback guys, that property, I mean, the driveway is big, right? It's a pretty big driveway. And if you look at the property, there's block wall, lower block wall that comes almost down to the back of curb. I would say within 18 inches of the back of the curb. And it was never disclosed to us that our driveway wasn't even our driveway when we purchased the house. We did not know that the whole nine foot from back of curb wasn't part of our property. We had no idea of that. So, when we learned that, that was sort of a shock too because I'm like, holy crap, that, that's an easement. And shame on us for, I don't, I don't know why we would have looked at that, but shame on us for, for not looking at that. So, we thought the darn thing, you know, I can still park my truck in front of the boat and be in our driveway. And I guess it's not our driveway. We thought so.
Absolutely. Any, any questions of the applicant? Okay, go ahead.
I'm having a little bit of an issue trying to decipher. How close is the, the carport from the back of the curb? I don't see that measurement.
Should, is it on the, the survey? I'm not sure.
Well, the survey shows-
What we have, guys, is we have nine foot of a, of an easement because I know, I think it was Nelson, we have nine foot of an easement. And then, from that nine foot, we have 4.52 feet to the, to the, to the cover.
So, I was going to say 14?
So, we're 14 feet off the back of the curb.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant? No? Okay, thank you, guys. We're going to conduct a public hearing.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start the public hearing. Anyone wishing to be speak on this matter. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. We'll bring it around. I just wanted to make it known, I know that we got this late for our packet here. There was feedback from the public from one, looks like it is the neighbor, said nothing but great things and that you've really cleaned it up and, you know, I can tell you from doing projects and stuff, you've got to put your faith in the contractor. We can't micromanage and especially if you did your due diligence in looking them up. And I mentioned that because both the photographs, they looks wonderful, but even your neighbors think that it looks wonderful and that it's added value to the, to the neighborhood as well. So, that was provided to us in our packet when we got in here today. So, any, any discussion, anything around the dais? Yes, Ernie.
Other question you have to staff. Since there's an easement there right in front of their property and because the street is narrow, is there any intent or possibility in the future the city could take that easement and to widen and straighten the street?
Well, for one thing, just to clarify, it's not actually an easement, it's the city right-of-way. So, the city owns that land.
Okay, then let's just say it's the city right-of-way. Is there any possibility they could take that right-of-way and strip to straighten the street and widen it?
Theoretically, the city would have the right to widen the street within the right-of-way. I'm not aware of any plans from Public Works that-
So, wouldn't that present a problem then from our standpoint in approving it since the potential is there?
No, Public Works Department did not indicate any objection to the request.
Isn't that a city council determine thing or is that a city works determination to widen the street?
Well, it costs public dollars to widen a street, so to my knowledge, there have been, there's been no requests from the citizens that they want a wider street there, so to my knowledge-
My question was, is the, up to the council to make that determination or the Public Works?
Well, the council will have to approve funding to widen the street.
Okay, so we wouldn't know that unless the council in the future decided to do it, but the potential is always there.
The potential is always there.
Okay.
But, Susan, the carport, it's, how far does it come from the city right-of-way?
The 4.92 feet.
It's under five feet. So, it's really not on the easement, is that correct?
Well, again, it's five feet from the property line or right-of-way line.
Okay, so it's five feet from it, so, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. I was going, I just wanted to say, I did drew the drive-by, saw the property. It looks very nice. It does add, I think, value, especially if you're a boater, you're going to want something like that. So, I, I thought it looked very nice.
Yes, Nate.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a point here. This right-of-way, the 60-foot right-of-way, on the opposite side of the street, the right-of-way actually goes through two different property owners' roof lines.
Yeah.
I mean, it's that drastic. So, and the, and the, this right-of-way isn't even centered on Alpine. I mean, I don't know what the correction is here, but I think the right-of-way probably needs to be adjusted to some degree. It seems a 60-foot right-of-way in that section of town seems excessive. So, that's my comment.
Questions, comments, concerns, entertain a motion?
Are we back to discussion?
Oh, yeah. Good question.
Okay, just with respect to that, while we might, while the city might not want to go to 60 feet, it is clear that on either side of the street, there is room to widen it. And I guess some of our current code does take it down to probably a minimum of about 51 feet, not including sidewalks, which apparently won't be there. So, there is still the potential for a problem in the future if that was the case. And Alpine is a pretty heavily trafficked street, is it not?
This, this is on their property and into, it's not on the right-of-way. So, even if the city as crazy as it would be-
I understand that, but we're also, but we're also, excuse me, we're also dealing with now five feet from what would be the city property or the property line.
Correct. And that's the variance that we're addressing.
So, the issue is now we have another situation being created that we're now allowing for a structure to be five feet from technically what is their property line.
Correct. That is the variance that we are addressing this evening.
That is correct. And at the same token, what it does is it creates a potential future issue, but that's my only, that's my concern.
I'd like to see something on that, just to clarify, because Alpine is more of a rural area, so you're not going to have any buildup in there. And I think the citizens up in that area do want to keep it kind of that rural windy area up there. So, I, I don't foresee ever widening those streets up there because it's been that way for years and years and years. And because it is kind of more of a rural atmosphere, I, I just don't see that, and there's not that many houses over there. You've probably got what, maybe 20 houses?
Is there not a potential for future development out in that area?
I honestly don't see how they could potentially-
I don't know, so I'm asking.
-extend Alpine any further.
Not on that street because it would be, on the other side is some land that's not available.
But not accessible through Alpine.
But what they did, not accessible through Alpine. That's why they had Randy build that one street because it would go to some, along his property because it would go to some future building, but not on Alpine.
And just as a point of clarification, that 51-foot right-of-way, Ernie, is from back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk. We don't even have sidewalks. So, theoretically, this is 41 feet if you include the curb. And the street is 29.
Way off.
It is so off. So, that's all.
That's why my question is, it's way off.
But on the other side of the street, more so.
I need to make my typical comment. You know, you've heard this from me many times before, so I'll say it again because I'd hate to have you forget it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, as always, as we look at variances, we of course have to recognize that they set precedent. And is that what we want to do here? I fully agree, both from pictures, drive-by, neighbors' comments, that it's a really nicely done building. And I want to point out to the applicant, I did not mean to single you out in my comment. It was more general frustration, not frustration at you because you did the right things, you know? So, you know, is saving some money for a storage spot justification for a variance? A variance that we will see as a precedent in all future packages of this nature? I just, once again, want to bring that to our attention and make sure that we consider that as we, as we deliberate.
And, and looking at that, I would say it, it looks appropriate to the area. And that does weigh on me is, is it, does it seem like it's appropriate when you're in there or in the neighborhood? And in my mind, I think it is appropriate.
And by virtue of looking nice, are we going to grant everybody in the neighborhood the right to do that, whether it looks nice or not? I mean, that's kind of what the heart of this matter tends to be, right? You know, generally, I, I agree. I think it really looks nice. I think it is a nice improvement.
I think we also have to take into consideration, these are a lot of non-typical lots, non-typical geographies. It's not like we're in a subdivision where you're looking down and you see somebody put a carport right in there. I mean, these houses sit up on the hill, they sit down on the hill. I mean, it's, it's really, it's kind of a, a one-off, I would, I would venture to say.
And I'd just like to say, we are in a resort area where people want their boats by their house. And I think we should try to accommodate that whenever we can and that it, it's not really causing or creating a problem. So, that's just my thought on it.
I'm going to, in the spirit of efficiency, make a motion to pass variance V-19644 with the conditions and finding of staff.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion, a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? For possible action, 2020 Land Management Process List, Resolution 1183, City of Boulder City.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The land management process is the city's opportunity to, in a very transparent, yes, process, not plan, in a very transparent way to determine whether the city should consider the sale or lease of city-owned land. This is an annual process that kicks off every September when we ask for people to submit their proposals for city consideration. This is taken to the city council in October. City council evaluates those requests and then makes determination whether to recommend to move requests forward to the planning commission for evaluation and recommendation back to the city council for final decision in January and February. And if they choose to add the request to the list, then that really is the start of the process for the city to consider the potential sale or lease of city-owned property. But I emphasize, this is just the beginning of the process. There would have to be appraisals if the land is going to be sold or a potential lease, consideration for master plan as well as the zoning. So, being the first step in the process, before you tonight is a city staff proposal for the adding of 1,275 acres. And as you can see on the screen, it's noted in red. This is referred to as Black Hills North Property. And with the process that occurred this year, there was no application submitted by anybody from the outside, only this staff proposal. And the staff report highlights what the current master plan designation is and the current zoning. But what this is being considered for is for renewable energy opportunities. And so, what we're looking for from the planning commission is your evaluation of this 1,275 acres and whether it's appropriate based on renewable energy consideration to be added to the land management process list. And with that, I will answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Michael. Now, is this something that is been initiated by one of our other land lease holders that's currently down there in anticipation for something like that? Is this, the city anticipating that we would want to look at renewable energy? What has sparked that 1,200 acres?
What sparked it is that the city recently put out an RFP for Black Hills South, approximately 1,100 acres directly to the south of this site, and had a significant response from renewable energy interest. And as a result, the city, city specifically staff, submitted this for consideration.
Excellent. Thank you. Next question is, I know up in that area, and we've done some tortoise habitat swapping, things of that nature, is that tortoise habitat area protection up there that we're going to need to carve out other land if this got further along in the process?
It's a good question. And maybe I can go back to the map for everyone's reference. So, you'll see on the map, the area in green is a desert tortoise easement, the conservation easement. And the area that was recently swapped is at the southwest corner of this map. So, this is nowhere near that easement. And in talking to the county, they're only interested in contiguous land if there was going to be any future expansion of the conservation easement. So, since this is not contiguous, it would not benefit them.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Yes, please.
I guess I'm just not sure whether this is a question of staff or maybe falls more to the comment among ourselves.
And just point of clarification, since you are the applicant, we're going to treat you and question you as the applicant as well.
Sounds fair.
In case you had a question for the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you. So, I guess just to build on Fritz's earlier question, the rationale for presenting this tonight or through this process is simply anticipation within the upcoming year of interest in renewable, of, of a company in picking up a lease on that for renewable energy. Is that-
It is the initial step, based on strong interest for the property to the south. Obviously, many more steps would be required, including consideration of the master plan, consideration of zoning, appraisals that would have to be authorized by the city council to consider the potential lease of this property.
Have, and maybe it's premature, but have studies been done? Where I'm going with this is, it seems like the leases are, I'll use the term encroach- Where I'm going with this is, it seems like the leases are, I'll use the term encroaching, on land that in the not-too-distant past has been used for off-road vehicle use, even off-road racing, that sort of thing. And it seems like we're tying up a lot of the land in this area for, for renewable energy, which I'm all in favor of. But has there been any study, any discussions with off-road groups as to whether or not continued expansion of, of, of this use is going to terminate or curtail off-road use?
No direct conversations with them with respect to this property. However, a couple of things to keep into consideration, the map again references the white area, which is the dry lake bed. That is being preserved for recreational uses, including for off-road vehicle usage. Also, off-road vehicles are able to utilize the desert, desert tortoise conservation easement as long as they stay on designated trails. That's another opportunity for them. In addition to that, the county is working on designating Nelson Hills, which is to the south of this area, through federal legislation in Open Lands Bill as a designated OHV area. So there's certainly a lot of opportunities for OHV usage, not in this area, but surrounding it.
Thank you. That's really, I really appreciate those insights.
So we leased this land to these companies, to these, these businesses for 99 years. Basically, they're tying up the property for a lifetime. Why aren't we just selling it to them?
Well, first, typically, city leases are between 40 and 50 years. And for the city to sell anything more than an acre requires going to referendum.
Wouldn't that be the choice of the people?
The people certainly to sell it.
To sell it, yeah.
Right.
Instead of us to decide just to lease it and tie it up.
The city has the opportunity to enter into leases, as we've done elsewhere within the Eldorado Valley. And the master plan does designate three uses for the Eldorado Valley, and that is energy renewable opportunities. It designates open space preservation and recreational uses. And also, with respect to the question of this land in general, the charter, which the people voted on and specifies these uses, has been reinforced by two advisory questions in 2009 and 2010, which further asked the question, are the citizens of Boulder City interested in expanding it beyond just solar leases to geothermal and wind renewable energies? And the voters did support that.
Any other questions of the applicant, staff?
I have one. The, I forgot the date. The October 29th, I believe it was the, no, October 22nd, city council meeting, our city council, from my interpretation, couldn't agree on the language for energy resource when we were talking about what we're gonna do with the master plan, because it didn't specify under the manufacturing column in that table for land use category. I guess we were talking about energy production versus energy generation. Are we gonna be able to figure that one out? Is that relevant to what we're doing tonight?
This is just the initial step in any process. So it's just looking at whether this type of use should even be considered preliminarily to be added to the land management process list. There is going to be the opportunity, should the city decide to move forward with going to an RFP, going to an appraisal, to further evaluate compliance with the master plan and zoning. And there are the opportunities for public input and consideration by the planning commission as well as the council at that point. This is really just the initial process. It's a chance that whenever there is property that's being considered for sale or lease, that it gives the public an opportunity to provide very preliminary initial input. So yes, there will be other opportunities down the road.
Any other questions? Nope, excellent. This is a public hearing. We'll open up the public hearing for this item, anyone wishing to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll start us off with discussion, and then if there's any more and then that stuff. Really wanna reiterate what we're discussing and deciding here tonight, is of all the crazy things that we could think about to use with this land to include literally nothing, OHV use or solar or development or any of those, is renewable energy suitable? That's the only question that we're asking. We're not asking about asbestos, the value, one idea or another, is renewable energy a suitable option there? Second, I would like to make a point to staff and push it up to city council as we should look to diversify these income streams. Renewable energy is great, but a 50-year contract is only good with San Diego gas and electric until California wakes up and realizes that it's cheaper for them to allow these renewable sources in their own state. And they could pick up, close down shop, you know, we can sue them, go after them, they close down one company, open up the next, and all of a sudden, that $10 million a year that goes into our general fund is dried up and gone. And if we've seen anything over the last 15 years in the development of solar, is it went from a, a nice dream to, you can put it on your house and heck, you can put it on your car and drive across country. So the reality is, is we really should look at diversifying these income streams and through renewable energy, I think it's a suitable use. But blanketing the entire valley with solar, setting our future generations up for failure. Any other discussions?
I was gonna say, fought very hard not to have a landfill in there. I am absolutely 100% for the solar. We fought very hard to have solar in that area to support the city and not to put a big dump down there in that basin. So I am absolutely 100% for the solar, and I think, I encourage it, and I hope we move forward with it. I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, I, I have discussion. There's, and this is amongst us, and partly what I'm really gonna say in my comments, I feel it should be on record with, at least from my perspective with city council, since this is our way of recommending to them, that won't necessarily, what I say, change how the board views this. I'll say right up front, I think if I look at the master plan and the three areas that are currently defined for that area, this one fits within it. I, I can't, I can't argue to it. I frankly, like Coke, say that's a good thing. However, that said, what does concern me is that it's almost like we have the cart before the horse. We talk about transparency, yet who's out in the audience to listen to a first time or provide input on what this property should look like? Again, it's a proposal as to, the city is making it, as to how this property should be considered in the future. So the problem I see is, we are so far overdue with updating the master plan and getting a true input from the citizens of this town as to what do we wanna do with all this area beyond the current city, which is the only thing technically is really defined in any kind of deal, detail within the city, master plan. And so I guess my short thing is, I really believe that the city council does need to take a serious look about updating the master plan, get some serious input from the community, broad input from the community as to what they really wanna see. Perhaps this should be kept as nothing but, not rural, but wildlife, whatever. Yeah, I can't think of the name now, but maybe it is solar and maybe it's not. There may be other considerations. And as even Paul said, you know, the fact is, we have OHV areas, they seem to be shrinking, maybe it should be kept larger. So I just, again, I, my recommendation will still be probably what everybody is, this looks like it's consistent with the current plan, but I gotta tell you, that's my feeling on where we should be going, I hope.
Absolutely. And, and to dovetail off that, a good concern, but to bring us back to the process, it's always good for the citizens, and although we've only got two folks in the crowd here this evening, there are folks that watch at home. And so their avenue is, as this process continues, it will go before the city council, it will go, and they will refine, maybe we don't want renewable, maybe they do want OHV. So there will be several other avenues that they can voice their concerns to the city council, here before us, at the planning commission, all of those things. So completely concur and want the public to know that there will be those avenues for them to get very specific as to yes or no on certain things there. So if no other discussion is warranted, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a recommendation to adopt resolution 1183.
Second? I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item six, monthly progress report. No comment? Item number seven, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak or be heard during this final public comment? Go ahead and close the final public comment. Meeting adjourned.
Tammy, don't forget your schwans.